And C 1-8-0, 2-1-8, Z-S-K. Because there's a contingent of community representatives and people who have an interest in this hearing who are outside. Just for clear notice, security has decided to close the doors because they feel we are at capacity. And so what we're doing, just so everyone can communicate, we have our district manager and some of our staff outside making sure that individuals can sign in. And just as you did to indicate if you were for or against the project, that process is taking place right now. So we want to be transparent. If you're on the phone with someone, you're texting someone, you can let them know that their position will at least be reported. Secondly, we are trying to manage time and there's a lot of individuals who signed up to speak, both from the community and from the representatives and elected officials. And so what I've decided to do is allow every representative who is representing an elected official an opportunity to speak. Okay? So we've cleared that up. Additionally, if there's anyone who has written testimony with them, you may submit your written testimony now. If you don't have written testimony with you today, you can submit it to the board office. Two other points to mention. Two other points to mention. On April 18th, in this very same room, the Land Use Committee of Community Board Two will be holding their meeting to discuss and take comments about the same public hearing, or about the same project, I should say, for any Flatbush. One other thing to note, on April 30th, the Brooklyn Borough President Eric L. Adams will also be hosting a public hearing. And that will take place at Borough Hall, and the time for each one of those meetings is 6:00 P.M. So we'll repeat that one more time. On April 18th, the Land Use Committee of Community Board Two will be holding their normal meeting in this very same room at 6:00 P.M. And the Brooklyn Borough President will also be hosting a public hearing on April 30th at 6:00 P.M. Does everybody have that? Do I need to repeat it one more time? Fantastic. So let me just try to look through what we are planning to do for tonight's agenda. So if you notice behind me there's a posted log at the bar, but what we're trying to do is as individuals come to speak, we're going to try to capture the material comments. And so what I'm asking everyone to do is, I want to make sure that we're fair, because tonight, this is going to be about the community, not the board members. So for my colleagues on the board, we're going to have a small window where you can ask questions, and then that's it. The rest of it will be for the community to be able to speak and give comments. We will not, board members, my colleagues sitting on the stairs with me, will not be going back and forth. It's just about taking in and listening to hear the comments. So given that, I would ask that everyone who has an opportunity to speak, speak slowly and clearly if you can, so we can accurately record it in the minutes. All right? And if you get up to the podium, if you would, just please announce your name, and if we need you to spell it, we'll ask you to spell your name to make sure it's accurate. The other thing I want to try to stress upon everyone tonight is that we've committed to do a three-hour meeting. And so since we're starting at roughly 6:30, we're going to end hopefully around 9:00. If anyone feels inclined to not speak, and so we can leave a little early, that's greatly appreciated. But if not, we don't want to rush the community's comments. So we want everyone to feel like they had this opportunity to speak. Another point I want to stress is that we've had several questions and several comments. So let me walk through the goal of what we're trying to do tonight. There were several entities that have many members that have signed up to speak. And so what our goal is to make sure we hear from at least every representative body that's represented here tonight. And so for example, if you are a member of, and so my name is Lenny Singletary. For those of you looking at the agenda, I am not showing it right if there's any confusion. I am not. The chair lady was unable to make it tonight, and so I am Lenny Singletary. And Irene Janet is our first vice chair. Irene, where are you? And so she's sitting in the front. But let me use myself as an example. So if I'm a member of Lenny and Associates, and I have 50 members from Lenny and Associates who want to speak tonight, I want to do my best to not allow for that. What I'd like the members of Lenny and Associates to do is gather up, pick a spokesperson, and have that person represent. My goal is to make sure that we have one pass through, so at least we can hear from every representative group that's here tonight. Once we've gone through that process, if there's time at the end that allows for members of the community to speak who have not already spoken or not been represented from a representative body, then we'll call it. Okay? So let me say that one more time. If there are 50 individuals, as an example, from one group, I'm going to ask that you huddle up if you've not already done so, and pick a representative to speak. Because I'm going to make sure that we hear from every representative group. As we get information that's material, it'll go on the board. If you have something to say, and it's already been captured, I would ask that you please not be redundant. We want to make sure that we hear from everyone. We want this to be smooth. I have every belief and every confidence that everyone in here, along with myself and my colleagues on the stairs, are going to work collaboratively to make sure we have a fair, open, and public hearing without anything that's going to be made. So I'm happy to say that we're going to make that happen tonight. My last comment before we start is I'm going to thank St. Francis College for their hospitality, and we appreciate that. So let me just make some clarification. The land use meeting, which is going to take place on April 18th, is a meeting that will not be another public hearing. So just be clear. The 18th meeting for the Land Use Committee of Community Board Two will not be a public hearing. It will be their normal, regular community meeting. All right? And then at the end of that meeting, as is a custom for all of our meetings, there will be community forum, which is a normal process. The last thing I want to mention before we get started is that there will be a two-minute time limit for every speaker, well, every public speaker. We've allotted some additional time for presenters and for elected officials and their representatives. However, I will say for all the representatives for the elected officials, we're allowed to ask that you put it here to the two-minute time limit, just to be fair to everyone. And for the presenters, we've also asked you to adhere to a time limit. We asked that you would help us have this meeting fluidly, so that you would support that as well. Have I missed anything?
Does everybody know on the 18th we're going to vote? Does everybody know?
Judy, thank you. So just to remind everyone, on the 18th, at the Land Use Committee meeting, that's where the vote will take place. So all of the comments that have been gathered tonight, all of the written testimony that's going to be submitted today, and things going forward, and everything that we're able to capture, that will be enough information to give the committee time to make a vote on the 18th. Right? So it's important that we hear from the committees and that we have that opportunity. Just so we're clear, and just want to have this process work, it's easier and it goes more fluid if I have questions that are from non-board members. If you would, just write a note or come up into the front two rows and ask the board member to ask your question. You can't have to take questions from the public, because it would be just too much of a challenge. So anybody who has a question that's not clear on, based on the statements I made, in the first two rows of board members. And so you can come down and ask the board member to ask your question for you. I think that's it, as far as the ground rules. It sounds like everybody is in agreement, and so we'll just start it with, so we'll just start with the presentation, but before we do that, I want to, I'm going to have my colleagues to my left and my right introduce themselves, and who they are and where they represent. Good evening, everyone.
My name is Sandra Rothbard. I am the secretary of the Land Use Committee, and I will be writing the topics that come up from your comment on the board, so that we capture everything as Lenny mentioned. I will try to be as legible and large as possible, and we will be adding notes when necessary. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Thurston. I'm the secretary of the full community board, and I will be the one formally asking you to speak slowly and state your name clearly.
One last item of housekeeping. If you please have cell phones, I'd ask that you at least put them on vibrate or turn them down. Once again, everyone will have a time limit, and we'll make the announcement that when we get to the, everyone's two minutes, has a two-minute time limit, and when we get to one minute, we'll make the announcement one minute, so you'll know how much time you have left in this process. For individuals that are just coming into rooms, there's still some seats, so I see maybe one seat there, one seat there. So if you have an empty seat next to you, you raise your hand, so that individuals will know that there's a seat for them, those that are entering the room. So if there's an empty seat next to you, please raise your hand. And so before we get started, I wanted to announce that the first presentation of the emails will be by the Educational Construction Fund and Alloy Development. But before you come to the mic, sorry, I want to acknowledge that we have our public advocate, Letitia James, and I'm going to allow Letitia James to be able to speak if you want her to. Yeah, if you want to. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. How are you? It's always great to be back in the neighborhood. For those who do not know me, my name is Letitia James, and I'm the, hello, the former city council member for Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, and parts of Bedford-Stuyvesant. And as most of you know, I still live in Clinton Hill, and obviously have a concern about what is happening in my backyard. And I've heard from a lot of my neighbors, I've heard from a lot of former constituents, and that's why I'm here today. So I want to thank Community Board Two, Shirley McCray, and Lenny Singletary, and all of the members of Community Board Two for having me here tonight and for allowing me to say a few words. I will be very brief. I've met with the developers' alloy of this proposed project, and I've expressed my concerns about the unprecedented scale and height of the project, especially in regards to the fact that it would be directly across the street from low-rise townhouses. In addition, I know that tripling the FAR, the FAR, will create a dangerous precedent. And so I'm also concerned about the timing of the affordable housing, which is much needed in this neighborhood. Concerned that obviously it will be built after the market-grade housing, and given the fluctuations in the market, we cannot rely upon that promise. And so at this point in time, I completely oppose this project, and I would urge because the negative impacts outweigh all of the public benefits. And so I know you've met with a number of residents, you have a community advisory, you've got a wonderful partner, and you're going to be building some schools, but the density, the timing of the affordable housing, the lack of transparency, the question with respect to the schools, and the fact that, as we said during the Atlantic Yards fight, that it's going to block the clock, I just think this project, it will set a, will be totally unprecedented, and will open up the floodgates and the doors to all of this out-of-scale development, which will overshadow the brownstone community that I grew up in and that I love and adore. And even though I'm citywide now, I always come back to my community to express my position. And my position right now is this project should be dead on arrival. Thank you.
First presentation of the email we're calling for on the Educational Construction Fund and Alloy Development.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Maldonado, and I am the executive director, the executive director of the New York City Educational Construction Fund. I'm here today with Jared Delavalley and A.J. Pyris of Alloy Development to present our proposed project, AD Flatbush. Can everyone hear me? Is this thing working?
No.
I'm sorry.
Not very good.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Okay. So let me start with some background. The Educational Construction Fund is, I'm going to have to do this, right? So the Educational Construction Fund is a public benefit corporation that was founded in the 1970s to build public school facilities for the New York City Department of Education. We leverage existing city land with schools to build new and better schools without the use of New York City capital funding dollars. AD Flatbush is a full block on Flatbush Avenue in downtown Brooklyn. Here's an aerial image of the site, showing the site's adjacency to Atlantic Terminal, the Williamsburg Savings Bank, and the recently completed developments of 300 Ashland, the Gotham, and the hub. The site is bounded by Flatbush Avenue, State Street, Third Avenue, and Scammerhorn Street. The New York City DOE owns about a third of the block, with the remaining two-thirds controlled by Alloy Development. The DOE property is occupied by the Khalil Gibran International Academy, which is New York City's first Arabic-language public school. It's housed in a 150-year-old structure, which has some pretty severe facility limitations. There's no gymnasium or auditorium. The cafeteria is undersized, and in the basement, many floors also have no bathrooms. It's not ADA accessible, and the systems are undersized and outdated. Principal Hamad from the Khalil Gibran School is here tonight, and I'm sure he'll note he has great success in recruiting incoming high school students because of the great cultural connection and academic rigor, but loses kids often in freshman year due to the inadequate facilities. Another need the project hopes to address is the elementary school seat need here and in this and adjacent school districts. The site is in District 15, Sub-District 3, which has an unfunded elementary school seat need of 1,114 seats. Similar unfunded seat need exists in surrounding District 15 and 13 sub-districts. We also have DOE District Planning here that can answer questions specific to that, and I know that they're going to make comments at the conclusion of this presentation. This is probably not new information, the need in the district. For a long time, CB2 has been advocating for new elementary school seats in downtown Brooklyn, as have many of the local elected officials. We've been listening and want to meaningfully address this issue. In June of 2016, ECF issued a request for expressions of interest for a DOE site in downtown Brooklyn known as 362 Scammerhorn Street, which currently houses the Khalil Gibran Academy. Alloy Development responded to and was ultimately selected in April 2017. We've been working collaboratively since then to prepare an ULEURP application, which was certified in February of this year. We're here to present the project to you, the community board, as one of the first steps in the seventh-month official review process. I'm going to hand it over now to A.J. Pyris of Alloy Development.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you to the community board for the forum and the time. Alloy has been in this CB for 11 years. This would be our fifth project in this CB. I live in the CB for over 10 years, as does my partner Jared, as do many of our employees. We like being held accountable in the area that we live in, work, and work in those areas. I'm also really pleased to announce the recent partnership with Fifth Avenue Committee to develop the affordable component for the project. Fifth Avenue Committee, for those who don't know, is one of the oldest and most well-respected affordable housing developers in the city, and they're also a neighbor to the site, which makes them particularly well-suited to address the fort-like housing needs the project should need. To that end, I want to introduce a few folks. Jay Marcus from Fifth Avenue Committee is here and available to answer your questions after the presentation. In addition, I also want to introduce Carol Rosenthal of Fried Frank Land Use Council, who can answer specific questions, and also Lynn Doe of AKRF, who oversaw the draft environmental impact statement. We're obviously very excited to address the school need issues and the issues in the Khalil Gibran facility, but we're also really excited to address other needs that the district has. One of the most dire, which is the housing issue. As everybody knows, we're in the middle of a housing crisis. Rents continue to outpace incomes, and the gap is particularly severe for those who make adder below 60% of the average median income. One particularly important note is, in this CB, if you take the average income and the average rent in downtown Brooklyn, about two-thirds of residents couldn't afford that rent. So we need to build more housing, and we need to desperately build more affordable In addition, there's an office need, building office space in downtown Brooklyn. Building office space in downtown Brooklyn is an important way to keep Brooklyn businesses here and allow them to grow and to invite new businesses to the borough. Downtown Brooklyn has the lowest vacancy rate citywide. So this project includes several public benefits that we believe meet specific identified needs in the district and support the future of Brooklyn's residents. Specifically, the program includes, in the form of public benefits, 147 and a half thousand square feet of affordable housing, 105,000 square feet of new schools, 15,000 square feet of cultural space. The Education Construction Fund will own 215,000 square feet of residential, and Alloy will build 210,000 square feet of office space, 380,000 square feet residential market rate, and 40,000 square feet of retail. More specifically, the project will include 200 units of permanently affordable housing at an average of 60% AMI. Those are rents that range at a 40% AMI from $475 a month for a studio to $1910 a month for a three-bedroom at 80% AMI. Fifth Avenue Committee has just begun the work of beginning to identify what the local need is, so that we can be strategic about how to provide affordable housing in the district. The project includes two new public school facilities, 350-seat replacement facility for Khalil Gibran, which increases their capacity from around 300 to 350, and a brand-new 350-seat elementary school. It's also important to note these schools are turnkey and ready to use upon completion. In addition, the school land is growing from 17 and a half thousand square feet to 23,000 square feet. This is exactly due to providing the facilities and programs that the current buildings can't accommodate, like gyms and auditoriums. The project includes the repurposing of an existing building at the corner of Third and Scammerhorn into a cultural institution, which we're excited about complementing and enhancing the downtown Brooklyn Cultural District. The project affords 3,000 jobs, 1,500 construction jobs, and 1,500 permanent jobs in the form of teaching jobs, office jobs, retail jobs, building service staff jobs. And the project provides $230 million of public benefit, $100 million in schools, $120 million in affordable housing, and $10 million in cultural. The project is pushing best-in-class practices for environmental sustainability. The schools will be designed to SAAG-rebuilding standards. The towers will be designed lead gold. And I think taking a step back, locating a project adjacent to transit allows us to reduce our reliance on automobiles, and in fact, this project proposes no parking. We're very proud of our environmental sustainability record as a firm. We're also very proud to be promoting what we believe is a new model for equitable development. That includes a stated goal of 30% minority women in local business enterprises on the contracting side, a partnership with 32PJ to ensure the permanent jobs are fair paying, forming with Fifth Avenue Committee a community advisory group to inform the project before, during, and after the construction, and the establishment of an equity officer position, which is an in-house position whose sole purpose is to oversee these practices. The Asbury Project could not provide these suite of benefits. It would be a 400-foot-tall project without public review with parking and loading. Therefore, we're proposing the following zoning actions in order to support the project. There's a zoning map amendment, tax changes, and a special permit. We're proposing changing the district from C62 with an FAR of 6.5 to a C69 with an FAR of 18, to designate the site as a mandatory inclusionary housing site, the M obviously standing for mandatory, to ensure that the affordable housing is built, and a special permit that affords a variety of modifications for bulk, parking, which we're eliminating, loading bursts, which we're reducing, the commi H and ground floor use. We've also prepared a draft environmental impact statement that looked at 17 areas of study, and has identified four potential areas of impact. I want to stress that the environmental impact statement is a draft and is at the beginning of a process towards finalization. And while I think there are going to be some impacts that are unavoidable, for instance, construction noise, we're optimistic about working with the Mayor's Office of Environmental Coordination and the relevant stakeholders to try to mitigate the impacts. Specifically, we're working with the Brooklyn Bears community. We're having a meeting shortly to discuss shadow impacts to their garden, and with Landmark's Conservancy, Landmark's Preservation Commission, excuse me, to discuss the historic resources impact. Before I turn it over to my partner Jared to talk about the design of the project, I also want to address density at this location, which is something we've heard a lot about. We just heard from the public advocate. We believe this is the right location for a project of this scale. Flatbush has always been Brooklyn's central artery, and Atlantic Terminal is the borough's largest transit hub. A growing city should be providing density in the right locations, and we think this is one of them. The Atlantic Terminal was located here over 100 years ago and has 28 bus and rail lines going through it. And the development of Atlantic Terminal really began the planning for a dense urban center here in this location. These articles from roughly 100 years ago speak to that. And this site has always been included in dense zoning districts in the borough. The first map that came out in the first set of zoning in 1916 included the site. The site was included in the Central Business District following the major update to zoning in 1961, this dating from 1969. In the 2004 Special Downtown Brooklyn Zoning included the site. There are now seven projects over 500 feet tall along the Flatbush corridor with three under construction. We also want to address the issue of precedents. This district has several precedents of very dense buildings that date almost 100 years ago. Here are four examples, all with FARs greater than 18. In addition, dense buildings exist in this district next to brownstones, whether that's toward Brooklyn Heights or across the street, the Williamsburg Savings Bank. This is also a precedent, we think, for the project. With that, I'm going to turn over to my partner Jared, and thanks again for listening.
Thank you, everyone. Having lived in this CB for 17 years, we've witnessed a number of projects pursue ULEUR. We've heard demands for a transparent and inclusive process, and it's with that lens that we determined we would pursue our process for AD Flatbush. We started meeting with the community almost 18 months ago and before the RFBI was issued. We decided we would meet with local electeds and local stakeholders in order to understand how best to respond to the RFBI. Over the last 18 months, we've held over 100 public meetings. We've made time for our neighbors to ensure that we listen to their concerns, and we responded by making changes to our proposal. We've had a number of working meetings with representatives from the Boreham Hill Association and One Hands in Place in our office, and in fact, we've met with this CB and presented the project four times before the start of ULEUR. The process has been very helpful for us and instructive. It both shaped our initial response and led to modifications that we've incorporated into our current proposal. It's important to note that we're at the very beginning of ULEUR, and it's uncommon for people to make changes of this kind in advance. There's lots of time for the community to respond, and we're excited for and anticipate your constructive criticism, so that the leadership of CB2 can take those concerns into consideration. In those meetings, we learned a number of things about the community and what their priorities were, that preserving the existing buildings were a priority, and we agree with that. We learned that separating the two school entrances and maintaining the high school entrance along Flatbush would be valuable, and locating the lower school entrance on State Street would be appreciated. We were encouraged to consider eliminating parking based on the transit-rich location of the property. We were also encouraged to extend the street wall along State Street in order to shelter the townhouses from the noise on Flatbush. We also learned that people were dissatisfied with the existing set of skyscrapers that had come up in the way that they handled their mechanical bulkheads and equipment, and were encouraged to conceal those and to use the same level of material quality and scale and thoughtfulness with the rest of the towers. We also learned that people would prefer that we set back the Phase 1 tower to more, to relate in mass and scale to the Williamsburg Savings Bank, and that we would design the towers to be more opaque and less glassy, more masonry-type of facade. Our master plan started by locating the program on the site contextually. We took cues from the existing neighborhood on each frontage, as they're very different, and located program accordingly. Our residential entrance along State Street, and the lower school entrance along State Street, with an additional residential entrance on Third, followed by culture across in the cultural institutions, office, high school, and retail along Flatbush. We committed our team to preserving the existing buildings to ensure that the local fabric of the neighborhood that was cherished would be saved. We had determined that schools, in fact, should look like schools and should not be and should not be buried in the tower of a building, and that they should have their own civic identity and an architecture that we would be proud of 100 years later. We are actually proposing five buildings on the site. The Phase 1 of our project needs to include the new schools and a mixed-use tower so that we can keep the existing Khalil Gibran School in operation. And the Phase 1 Tower includes ECF's Residential, about 100,000 square feet of commercial office space, and retail. When the school is completed, the, in 2022, the Phase 2 Tower can start. The existing historic buildings will be repurposed into a cultural institution, and the Phase 2 Tower, which includes the residential, additional commercial space, and retail, and the permanently affordable housing units will be built, which will be completed in 2025. The Phase 1 Tower celebrates the site's geometry, very much like the Flatiron Building, and accepts the triangular shape and supports it. Additionally, the Phase 1 Tower now sets back in accordance with the setbacks that we found at the Williamsburg Savings Bank, and it matches the height and materiality of the same. This is a view looking down forth, which is the sort of iconic view of the Williamsburg Savings Bank, and you're beginning to see the relationship of both height, materiality, and scale and setbacks of our proposed Phase 1 Tower. And the image on the right is a view from the intersection of Ashland and Hanson Place. On the other hand, the Phase 2 Tower is actually located in between the existing historic buildings. It enables us to preserve the buildings and avoid strategies that are just about façadism and to preserve the buildings in their entirety. As the Phase 2 Tower rises, it reorients itself to Flatbush Avenue, and it sets back along Third Avenue. And the shifting of the shape enables us to preserve views of the Williamsburg Savings Bank down Skimmerhorn Street, which was a topic of much debate that we heard at the 300 Ashland, right, at ULEUR. This is a view from the top of City Point, looking southeast along Flatbush in the context of its new neighbors. This is a rendering looking over downtown Brooklyn and down the skyscraper corridor. When we designed AD Flatbush, we tested our team with making the design inclusive rather than exclusive to ensure that we could create a welcoming and diverse experience for the entire community. This is an axonometric drawing, which illustrates the relationship of our project to State Street. And you can see the strategy here of expressing a street wall that is similar in size and character to the townhouses on the opposing side of the street. From left to right, you can see the preservation of the existing building from 1860, a new lower school entrance, a new lower school that is similar in scale and mass to that of the historic building, and a street wall that extends all the way to Flatbush, and our new loading entrance and residential entrance. And what you'll note is that the loading entrance is one-quarter of the size of that which was available as of right. This is a rendering looking down State Street of the lower school designed by Architecture Research Office. We selected Architecture Research Office to a design competition we held amongst our architectural peer set for their capacity to design 21st-century schools that could marry well with the existing context and the existing historic fabric. This is an axonometric drawing looking at the intersection of Third Avenue and Flatbush. And from right to left, you're seeing the preserved 1860 building. You're seeing the tower slipping into the space between the two existing buildings that are being repurposed, the cultural institution on the corner of Skimmerhorn and Third, the Khalil Gibran School expressed as a new civic building, and the transformation of our street wall to allow, as it heads down toward Atlantic Terminal, to allow for an office entrance and retail at the corner. This is a view from the intersection of Lafayette and Flatbush. We've heard over the course of the project that local retailers have often not been considered by our project. We test our team with creating spaces for local retail and to accommodate existing neighborhood fabric. We're proposing a bike repair shop, which helps celebrate our transit-rich location. We ourselves have over 400 bicycle spaces in our building to promote the use of alternative means of transportation. We're proposing a café on the corner of Third and State and an additional local retail outlet along Flatbush for a burgeoning retailer that might want more presence. Spaces of ours that we designed, like our lobby along Flatbush for our Phase 1 Tower, are meant to be welcoming and inclusive. In fact, the facade opens in its entirety to provide space for pop-up, retail, and pop-up venues. And in the background, you're seeing a small park, an indoor park, that we've created as part of the experience. Community spaces we recognize are hard to come by, and venues like this are in large demand. And so we've created opportunities for space within our cultural venue and a gymnasarium within the existing school, or within the new facility, school facility, to allow for both presentations and additional sports venues in the neighborhood. This is a rendering of the gymnasium in the elementary school. You're seeing there, as a presentation or on performance base, the bleachers fold up, the basketball nets fold down. And what you'll notice is that it's located at grade to eliminate a lot of the security issues or management and maintenance issues that are typical in a school building, such that it can really get used by the community. We've additionally provided for additional open space and relief on the block. We've proposed funding both the design and construction of a DOT Plaza at the intersection of Skimmerhorn and Flatbush. I mentioned before the space inside our lobby that has a green space in the hill, which is meant for community occupation, and a school courtyard along State Street. This is a rendering looking across Temple Square, where you're seeing the existing buildings preserved and converted into a cultural. You're seeing the new Khalil Gibran on the right, the Williamsburg Savings Bank, of course, in the distance, and our new towers. The mosaic of all of the experiences that we have proposed is truly exciting, and we're very proud of the amount of effort that our team put into making an experience that would be both welcoming and inclusive for the community. In closing, we're very excited by the public benefit that's afforded by this project, and we think this is the right place for Brooklyn to grow. We've tried to run an open and inclusive process, including more than 100 meetings with local stakeholders, and believe we've made the project better together. We look forward to hearing your comments, answering your questions, and listening to the public testimony this evening. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll call the representative from DOE who's asked to speak. Just wanted to remind you of two minutes, maybe we could just finish this off.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Will Candell. I'm from the New York City Department of Education. I'm speaking on behalf of the DOE in support of the project at AD Flatbush. As some of you may know, AD Flatbush will create a 350-seat elementary school. Factoring in the additional students that we anticipate coming from AD Flatbush, we anticipate a net gain of 164 elementary school seats coming from this project that can be used to alleviate overcrowding, current overcrowding and projected overcrowding in the neighborhood. So District 15 as a whole faces growth and capacity challenges at the elementary school level. Over the past five years, enrollment has grown by 15%. 19 out of 24 of the elementary school buildings have utilization rates over 100%. And 10 schools are, have zoned kindergarten waitlists for the 2018-19 square. And so we believe that this project can help play a role in alleviating some of the overcrowding that we're seeing in District 15 schools. So in addition, the DOE projects a significant capacity need for the immediate neighborhood surrounding AD Flatbush. Five of the elementary schools in the vicinity, some of which are in District 13, are overutilized and in need of opportunities to address overcrowding. In addition to this project, there are also 6,000 other new or permitted housing units that are, thank you, that are planned in the elementary school zones surrounding AD Flatbush. So we see an anticipated growth in this area and a need for increased number of elementary school seats. AD Flatbush is located in the PS38 Zone, and while 38 is currently underutilized, it only has about 85 available seats. And there are more than 2,000 additional units of housing anticipated in the 38 Zone alone coming over the next several years. So again, another need for increased number of elementary school seats in the zone. And so given the overcrowding that we're seeing now and projected overcrowding in the future, the DOE supports the AD Flatbush project. And in the event that this project does move forward, the DOE remains committed to working with the Superintendent, Community Education Council, to determine which admissions priority or possible zoning options would be, would exist for, for these elementary school seats. And so with that, we, we will hope that this project can help address overcrowding in the nearby schools and to promote the educational goals of the community.
Thank you. So here's what I'm going to do, since we've already, we have a series of individuals who... Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. So since we've already had one representative come from the DOE, at this time, I'm going to go through the list of all the other representatives here for the elected officials, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the comments from the community. So I have Suzanne, Suzanne Pasquale Antonio, from representing State Assemblymember Joanne Simon.
Good evening. My name is Susannah Pasquale Antonio. Assemblymember Joanne Simon is in Albany right now finishing up the budget, so I'm going to make some comments on her behalf. I represent the 52nd Assembly District, which includes Borum Hill, the neighborhood in which the proposed project is cited, and the surrounding areas. I'm also a neighbor of the project. I've lived in Borum Hill for 35 years. I have observed many changes in our neighborhood and the commercial district, including small businesses being pushed out, traffic demographic changes, and skyrocketing rents. The community has organized against projects that would have been detrimental to its character and its people, but we have also successfully worked with developers to enhance the landscape of the, of the community. Since the AD Flatbush project would significantly change the character and the quality of the Borum Hill and downtown Brooklyn area, I urge Aloy and ECF to work with the community to create a project that serves its needs. I will be submitting much more extensive written testimony, but would like to point out a few key concerns this evening, many of which have been expressed to me from the community. The project's gratuitous demand for an unprecedented floor area ratio of 18. Number two, the pressure on traffic and congestion caused by the project. Number three, its exacerbation of the woefully inadequate open space available to the residents. Number four, the mischaracterization of the location of this project, which is in fact in the neighborhood of Borum Hill in that downtown Brooklyn. And number five, the pressure this proposal would have on the physical and social infrastructure, including the shortage of school seats and overburdened transit. While I'm grateful for the amount of the meetings on this project, and I commend the developer for those meetings, I'm disappointed that the community has expressed numerous concerns that have not been adequately addressed in this final project.
20 seconds.
Okay. One-third way there. So first, the proposed development is overwhelmingly commercial in nature and historically large and unprecedented FAR. Located in already densely built and highly congested area, the project's impacts will be vast. And it's slated on a small plot of land in one of New York City's busiest intersections. Also, would like to point out that there are other large construction projects that are in the pipeline for this area. It's likely that these massive reconstructions of the BQE and likely reconstruction of the Brooklyn House of Detention will be occurring at the same time, resulting in other projects and other difficulties related to safety, change in traffic, noise, influx of vehicles, influx of people. Okay. So I'm going to wrap up, again, by saying the public advocate talked about housing and the affordable housing, that's a concern. I'm also concerned that the proposed building will further displace the African-American community in the area. As the project continues, I really urge the developer to work together with the community to create a design that will be beneficial, useful, and safe.
Joshua Moore, representing Assemblymember Walter Mosley. And so while Joshua is coming up, the next person I'm going to call is our...
Good evening. My name is Josh, in Assemblyman Mosley's office. We did not prepare a statement for tonight, but I can tell you the Assemblyman does not support this project, and we defer to his colleague, Assemblywoman Joanne Simon. And I will yield my floor to the other representatives. Thank you.
Jason Solomon, representing Senator Fonge Van Korn.
Good evening. The senator is in Albany, like Joanne Simon, finishing up the budget. I will read a statement on her behalf. Good evening, members of Community Board, too, neighbors, and community stakeholders. Let me begin by saying that I am unequivocally against using public resources to support the proposed development of AD Flatbush Avenue. While I recognize the extensive capital needs of Khalil Gibran International Academy and support the involvement of the Fifth Avenue Committee on this project, the overstated public benefits do not outweigh the potential damage to our community and the millions of lost property tax values. I stand with my constituents. I stand with my constituents in the community in saying enough is enough. We are tired of the destruction of the social fabric of our neighborhoods, the displacement of longtime residents at the hands of gentrification that has changed Brooklyn from a borough of brownstones to a borough of skyscrapers. Our seniors can no longer afford to stay in their homes, and our children cannot afford to live in the neighborhoods where they were raised. 60,000 people, New Yorkers, live in shelters, and millions of workers who are the backbone of our economy struggle against the tide of homelessness. The very culture, character, and spirit of our neighborhoods that attracted people to come here is dying, and developments like AD Flatbush are killing it. Let me be clear. I am not against development.
One minute.
I am against socially irresponsible, out-of-scale overdevelopment. I am against taxpayers subsidizing private developers under the guise of public benefits. I am against myopic city planning that evaluates projects individually rather than within the context of community development. I am against homeowners and small business owners bearing the weight of escalating property tax values because new development projects are exempt from contributing to city and state tax coffers for decades. I am against the lack of planning that enables massive development projects to be built without consideration for the burdens placed on New York City's aging infrastructure. Last July, Assemblywoman Joanne Simon and I submitted joint comments of the draft scope of work for the preparation of the environmental impact statement for this site. We are disappointed that our request for the expansion of the proposed study area for 402 feet to at least one square mile was not granted.
20 seconds.
For a project this size, which triples the far of an azabrite development under C62 zoning, 400 feet is entirely too small to adequately evaluate the impact of this proposed developing on its surrounding area. So I'll wrap it up now. So we respect... So we respectfully request that Community Board Two reject this proposal. Thank you.
So keeping in line with the announcement that I made earlier, I see that Councilmember Combo has two representatives here. So we have Jason and Crystal. Pick which one of you is going to speak. Thank you, Jason. Two minutes, Jason.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. Majority Leader's office does not have a position at this time. We are here to listen to your community input. We'd like to see what you guys want to talk about for the rest of the night tonight. I'll be here until the end. Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Representative from New York City Comptroller's Office. Last name is Ms. Gomez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anayeli Gomez, representing the New York City Comptroller's Office, Scott Stringer, and we do have a statement. So we want to be clear, the proposal extends the high-rise structures of downtown Brooklyn further south than originally planned in two thousand and four rezoning. The concerns around height, shadowing, traffic, and risk of overdevelopment should be carefully studied, and all potential impacts need to be mitigated prior to allowing a development of this magnitude to move forward. The Comptroller's Office believes in community-based planning and that developments shouldn't simply steamroll communities. We acknowledge the need for renovations in the school, the need for more school seats and more affordable housing, but whenever anything is proposed, it is always better with community input rather than being dictated down to the community. On behalf of the Comptroller's Office, we'll be listening to the residents speaking here tonight, the local community, and our fellow elected officials as this process moves forward. Ultimately, we are here to listen to you, the community. Thank you.
Okay, so I know I jumped around a little bit from the agenda, but I wanted to keep the flow moving. So now we'll have ten minutes for questions from Community Board members only. Ten minutes, Community Board members. Mr. Meyer.
Very simply, what was the largest FAR that has been approved in the last fifteen years in New York City? And is there any place that has been in excess of fifteen FAR in New York City in the last fifty years?
I'm sorry, who do you want to answer the question?
I would assume that the... You want me to repeat that?
Yeah, please, if you could.
The question is, in the last fifty years, what is the highest FAR that has been approved? And is there, in the last fifty years, any FAR in excess of fifteen been approved?
So in the last fifteen years in New York City, there have been FARs of thirty, thirty-two, twenty-three, twenty-eight that have been approved. So, and those have been in, as you might expect, central business districts. My name is Carol Rosenfeld. I'm with Free Frank Harris, Shireburn Jacobson, we're Land Use Council for the project. Thank you.
Next question, everybody, from Community Board. It's coming.
After the...
Is there a microphone?
After the comments from, after the comments from the resolution from CEC fifteen... Sorry. After the comments from CEC fifteen, resolution came out, there was a recommendation to increase the number of seats for the elementary school from three fifty to either seven hundred and fifty to a thousand. I just wanted to know if that was studied, if that recommendation was taken into consideration or if it was not. I mean, I understand it was not part of the project, but was it actually studied?
Well, the elementary school and the elementary school need was determined by the ability to maximize the floor area available. So right now, at this point, the three hundred and fifty is the maximum amount of seats that we can have for an elementary school and with the high school. So we are at the maximum capacity that we can have for the building itself.
Mr. Jordan, can we pass the mic to Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. Were there any studies done as far as traffic and congestion in that particular area? I didn't know if I heard about that during the presentation. But it seems like it was severely impacted, but it was already a crowded area.
Correct. There were a number of issues that were studied, and there were a number of issues that were studied in the EIS. Lynde Do, here is from AKRF, who can speak to some of that.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Lynde Do. We are the firm with AKRF, and we are the firm that prepared the draft environmental impact statement. As noted previously, we had studied about seventeen different technical areas. Transportation is obviously one of those. And as part of the analysis, we worked with and consulted with the Department of Transportation as well as the Department of City Planning to determine the effects and the area and the scope of the analysis. And in our EIS, we did determine that of the areas that we looked at, the number of intersections, out of the sixteen, we had nine that were impacted, all of which could be mitigated by four. The four are obviously around the Flatbush area because they already experience a high level of congestion, so it doesn't take much before you actually impact that. That has been disclosed. We have provided some mitigation measures, and we're in the process, between this process of working further with the agencies to determine what other commitments we can make to better address the traffic issues.
Ms. Solomon.
I know there's a lot going on about this schools, but my question is about the affordable housing. Is it going to be a rental building? Are they going to be permanently affordable? And what is the layout? How many studios, one bedroom, two bedrooms are there going to be?
I'm Jay Marcus with the Avenue Committee. They will be permanently affordable housing. The unit sizes and configuration are something we're looking forward to working with the Community Board on defining it. We have the demographic data that indicates some need for additional senior housing, for example, but we want to work with the Community Board and define it. It's projected that the affordable housing will be Tower Two in two thousand and twenty-two, so that gives us a lot of time to work with you and the other nonprofit and social service agencies as well to define what we want to do for the housing. We have a particular mission to make sure that, number one, the permanent affordability, which is there as part of mandatory inclusionary, but also to get to the lower-income populations, those who are at thirty and forty percent of AMI. So we're going to be working to make sure we particularly meet that very strong need. This is obviously a Community Board that's already had a lot of gentrification, but there's still sixteen percent of the population living below the poverty. And this is the seventh most income-diverse community in New York City. And we want to keep that economic diversity alive in the city and alive here in this community. So we really want to make sure we get to both, again, the variety of income levels and particularly the lower-income.
So this will be a rental building? That's what you're saying?
It'll be rental, yes. The affordable housing will all be rental, yes.
Ms. Fibrous?
Then Ms. Count, I'm coming to where are you? And then Ms. Blunt. Ms. Blunt.
Hello, thank you. I'm commenting...
One minute.
Questioning about the gymatorium. I'd like you to explain to the public, the gymatorium is, that's the gym, and the auditorium in what space is the elementary, sharing that with the high school? And how do you propose, you said that that's for neighborhood use as well, so how does the gymatorium, elementary, high school, gym use, and auditorium use, and neighborhood use all work out? Thank you.
So the high school has a competition-sized gym that is discreet and for the high school, Khalil Gibran School. The elementary school has a gymatorium, right, that is a smaller gym that converts to an auditorium. They're both directly accessed by separate schools, but they're also set up that they could be shared, such that if the Khalil Gibran School wanted to use the auditorium after the elementary school let out, it could, or vice versa if there was a large athletic event from the elementary school that could use the competition-sized gym. But there are really two large pieces of program, a gym, competition-sized gym for the high school, and a gymatorium for the elementary school. Does that answer your question?
And the neighborhood use in the presentation.
So yes, the image that you saw was the gymatorium that's donated to the elementary school, which is at grade on State Street, has an entry right onto State, so that the community can come right in and go down and not have to wind its way through the school to get to it.
And obviously, that's in working with the principals. Obviously, Principal Hamon is obviously very interested, and he has a very good relationship with the community. The principal of the elementary school obviously would be someone that would have the same relationship and allow access after hours and other times to the gymatorium.
Would you speak to the problem of the transportation at Atlantic Terminal and the congestion on the subways there? We're currently experiencing not being able to even get on a train and letting trains pass, so...
At this time, the DEIS did look at the transit, so in addition to traffic, we also looked at transit and pedestrians, and we did look at the Atlantic Terminal stations. We've been working with New York City Transit in terms of some of the analysis that they would further like us to refine, but our initial look at the traffic, the transportation loads there indicate that there is still, there is capacity for our...
No, 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 let's not do that, please. We've been doing great. Let's not do that.
It is the largest hub within the borough of Brooklyn, and it's recently renovated under the Atlantic Yards proposal, and there is ability for us to have capacity there. Like I said, though, between the draft and final, we are continuing our conversation with transit, as they wanted us to also look at other bits of the transit load on it. And so once the analysis is done and we've got concurrence, we'll report that in the final.
Ms. Blunt?
Am I correct in saying that there will be six, over six hundred market-rate apartments? How many market-rate apartments will there be?
There are approximately seven hundred market-rate apartments for a total of nine hundred apartments, two hundred affordable, and seven hundred...
Thank you. It seems to me that the schools is being built for the market rate... Those children will be have to go to other areas, and those are the people that has the least money for transportation and everything. So this building is being built for people who can afford to send their kids to that, I mean, that, you know, right there in that area.
So, no, the DOE is not here right now, but one of the things that we've been talking about with the DOE is making, the DOE has a number of options that are available, not making this a zone school, it could be a choice school, there is a diversity model that they're looking at as well to ensure that it's not just a school for that building. So there's different ways that the enrollment can be worked out so that the school itself will be representative of the larger community.
Mr. Harrelson?
Mr. Singletary, is EDC here?
Is EDC here?
EDC, no.
Economic Development Board. Okay, so the question I have is better directed. It is better directed than... However...
Wait, let me understand, the questions are directed for EDC and they're not here?
The question is a general question. And what I'd like to know is, will the developers admit that barring all the school cultural connections and the green spaces that they're showing us with nice slides, will they admit that by and large, this is a commercial operation that's meant to make money? And that's the beginning, and that's the end. And this whole thing about benefits for the community are more or less a sales pitch so that it will go through because, and this is about where EDC comes in, the city has to come clean and consider the fact that forty, twenty, and thirty years of tax evasion, whatever benefits they're bringing, whether people like this project or any of the projects, do not outweigh the tax benefits and the lost tax revenue that we get from it on the time we have. Two last comments. Any board members have questions beyond this, you can come to the Land Use Committee.
We can answer that question.
To the Land Use Committee meeting, which is going to take place in the eighteenth of August. Last, the Wacky, Barbara Zalnir, and then we're going to proceed with the rest of the public.
Did the Department of Education make its own analysis in the last twenty years about constructing another building for schools in our district? Without depending on another developer to contribute an open space?
No, of course. I think the SCA does a capital plan every five years to address what the capital needs are, and they look at what the construction, what the costs of constructions are, and where the district needs are, and that's what they do every five years. And actually, they do it every year, and they amend it every year to look at what the various needs are for the community. So yes, it's done on a four-year basis as well as a yearly basis.
Ms. Barbara Zalnir?
At the beginning of the presentation, I'm assuming we're still talking about a seventy-five-story tower. And I assume every, the developers have read the New York Times, that there are buildings going vacant and giving people free rent, and last time we heard from the developer, you had been to ninety different venues, now you've been to over a hundred. Have you given any consideration after those hundred visits to stop off any of this building? And, you know, we all saw those pictures in your slides where you did not show the whole building. You just were very careful about just showing the ground level. So what considerations have you given to removing some of these stories and having something that fits in with the rest of the neighborhood?
Thank you, Mr. Singletary. We have heard and read the stories in the Times as well as everybody else, and while it's true that there's been a lot of housing that's built within the last number of years, it pales in comparison to the actual housing crisis that exists today. There are over seventy-seven thousand new residents that come to New York City every year, and we only build approximately twenty thousand apartments. In Brooklyn alone, we added two City of New Rochelle's in the last seven years in our borough. And so from that perspective, we believe in the fact that there is an absolute housing crisis that is undeniable, and we believe in the power of the public-private partnership that we are proposing. And we also think that the moment in time where subsidies exist today is just that, it's a moment in time, and that all of those buildings are by and large leased unless they're still in construction, and that we are interested in entertaining alternative solutions, but not solutions that engage in either lower FAR or reduce public benefit.
Last question, Mr. Singletary.
You keep referring to your location as Third Avenue, Flatbush State, and Skimo One Street, and that's incorrect. It is actually located, is voted by Skimo One Slip.